It comes out of the general fund.
Would that be out of the operating budget then?
That would be, it's up to their department to put in, sorry, something into their strategic plan to fund that, and if that was selected for funding through the general sources, that would be, you know, again up to all of you to do.
Yes, Dr. Mead.
With a half mil in there, are you not getting enough requests from faculty to?
Correct.
All right, so how are we going to advertise that?
I have.
So that people will get more interested in, and I'm sure the needs are there.
I plan, I have actually a whole bunch of folks that have told me that they're, because I've been trying to spread the word.
Is there another way to do it? You can't do it all by yourself. This is.
I go to faculty senate, faculty, and hopefully they, because that's where the grassroots needs come from. Unfortunately, we have to do it now because we're in the strategic planning phase.
Okay.
So they have to.
They're looking at what they, their needs are.
Exactly. They have to have it on their plan so that TIF can fund it, because we do have to have an ID that goes along with it. So I'm trying to get the word out now to start putting these things in plan.
Is the request process burdensome for some, or is it a fairly simple?
We have, it has to do, it's about a four-page document where they kind of have to justify how they're going to, how this interacts with students, and what they expect to gain from this. A good example of the assessment work and stuff is when we funded, when you all funded the speech lab. That was one of them that we brought in, you know, through the assessment process, then on through the strategic planning, then through TIF. And so that's kind of the thing that each person who wants to put in a request kind of has to look at, is how they've made the determination that they need this equipment, and then how is this going to help students, how many students it's going to help? That's one thing that they kind of have to estimate.
Okay.
But it's really a three or four-page document.
They don't have to come up with a lot of data and a lot of.
No.
Okay.
No.
All right, just wanted to make sure that it hasn't become an impediment to people asking.
A couple of these, the very first one, I think it was like the week before we were having the TIF meeting, and I'm sitting there going, "Come on, folks, put some stuff in." And the first two came in that first, that week.
Okay.
Before, so it's not all that bad.
Dr. Mead.
Well, this is, Dr. Mazera is the one who started the TIF idea, so, because when you collect money from students, you could dispense it by department and just be done with it. Or, in his judgment, you have people apply for it so that there's a real need coming from somebody. It's not that easy to do the form. You have to do research on it.
A little bit.
Yeah, okay, but.
It's not all that bad.
All right, but, at this point, if people aren't going to use it, perhaps it's time to distribute it to departments. Just something to think about.
Well, I hope that we'll get more in, in the March session.
Okay. You're expecting then that you'll get more requests.
I'm hoping.
Yeah, okay.
Dr. Trustee McDonald.
That hasn't been the norm though, I don't think, has it? Because I do remember, occasionally we had a rather large balance, but a lot of times it was.
We do have.
It was used quite a bit.
Yes, there was only one time that I know of, since I've been on the committee, that we actually had to prioritize, and break some projects in half.
Okay.
So that we can fund half of it now and then half of it in the next session.
When the next phase, yeah, yeah, so it's, I wouldn't.
The computer's up at the Welcome Center.
Panic at this point in time and think that we need to change. I actually think that there are some guidelines in place that we couldn't just start to hand it out to departments.
We would have to change the committee.
Yeah, we would have to change, change some of the, yeah, yeah. I don't know that.
But I hope that we.
Right.
That we won't have that discussion again in March.
So final question, whatever happened to that egg?
To the egg?
What's that?
You don't have to answer that.
Whatever happened to the egg?
Oh, it's being used. It's, come on by sometime. It's in the tech building on the second floor.
Okay.
And they're using it for their program. I don't know if you've seen the auto mache table? That thing has got to be the coolest thing since sliced bread.
The Higher Learning Commission.
That was one of the coolest projects I think TIF ever did.
Thank you. Mr. James. I'm sorry, but I'd just like to remind all of us that anybody who wins these TIF issues here for equipment, et cetera, they have to give a presentation.
They have to give interim.
At the end of the year to say how it's been used and.
Yes.
Yeah, so there's follow-up on it also.
They have to give, every six months they have to give a, once a project is approved by you all, they start the funding process through Fred's area, and then they have to give a interim presentation, I'm sorry, interim report.
Okay.
Until the project's done, and then they do a final. And all of that is all on the website as the trustees wanted several years ago.
Is the presentation given to the TIF committee?
Correct.
Yes.
And it is a public, it is publicized.
And people are invited.
Absolutely, absolutely. We send it out through Rhonda's office to publicize it so that, let everybody know that it's a public forum, and they can come in anytime in the TIF meetings and join in.
Okay, thank you very much. I think.
Mr. James, thank you for your service to the United States military, and I appreciate seeing you there last week.
Thank you.
And thanks for doing this work. This is not a glamorous job around the TIF committee, so I'll commit to help you get any more applications.
Thank you. It'd be awesome to spend it all.
That's a bad problem to have.
Absolutely. You don't believe me when, hey, we got some money, why don't we? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions, let me know.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next item, please.
Action items, citizen participation, citizens wishing to address the board on agenda, non-agenda items for action, full expedited blue card to the secretary or treasurer in this case, may speak at this time. The board may not be in position to respond to non-agenda items, therefore speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or college employees. Please limit comments to three minutes. There is one blue card today from concerned citizen, Dr. Lynn Boza, who would like to address the board about navigator position appointments.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
And President Kavaluna. I'm Lynn Boza. I'm addressing you as a concerned citizen, an advocate for Henry Ford College, with roots in the community. I was born in Dearborn. I lived around Terramont in Wyoming, then moved to Dearborn Heights. I graduated from Crestwood High School, where I still have ties to a Crestwood Scholarship funded by a classmate. My two cousins founded, funded two nursing scholarships here at Henry Ford. I am the mother of a former transfer student. I currently work as a counselor at the college, and I am president of the adjunct faculty organization. I am commenting on the four navigator positions to be approved today. I am hoping that this new function will support ease of enrollment, as well as increase enrollment, retention, and promote student success. Over the past seven years, Henry Ford has added a number of functions. The advisor function, a limited navigator function, and guided pathways with increased ability for students to register online. Upon review of the current reorganization plan, I recognized that counselors have, for many years, performed and currently perform most of the navigator functions. One concern is that not one of the adjunct counselors with over 20 years' experience at the college who interviewed for the new navigator positions were selected for the position. And my other concern is that I hope creation of these positions is worth the increased investment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item, please.
Are there any items on this agenda which board members or the president wished to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the motion below.
So, any?
Are we voting on five separately?
No.
Okay, I'd like that pulled, please.
All right, five. Any other? Would you please read the motion?
Motion to approve action items number one through four as recommended on this agenda, except for five.
So moved.
Support?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Please attach a unanimous roll to one through four. If, at this time, before we move on to five, if you would like to introduce any of the individuals who you, who we just voted on?
Yeah, I can do that now. Thank you, Madam Chair. Through the board's action just now, I'm happy to announce several people who now are taking the position of a navigator, and majority of these, I think all of these, are employees who, before the board's action, were already employed by the college. I see a lot of them at the Welcome Center, and I know that they're passionate about enrollment and retention and student service, and I'm happy to see them here tonight, and I'm actually happy that you get to see them. Because if you do take me up on my invitation to stop in at the Welcome Center, you'll see them, and I hope you do say hello and congratulate them when you do see them there. So if, when I call your name, please stand, and then once we're done with this, I will ask my colleagues here on the board to welcome these to the new positions of navigator. But before I do state their names, I will say, these are the positions that, of course, you've heard me discuss with each of you. I've circulated a pretty extensive plan on this process that compared this college with other colleges, and also gave a justification for these positions. And I'm quite hopeful and excited that this will keep the direction we're moving right now in enrollment, and I know that we have the bright potential for the very well-respected and long-term quality that's given by our counseling department and our full-time faculty and adjunct faculty in the counseling department, to work with these individuals that are now taking over these somewhat new roles in the navigator position. I'll be candid with you, I've talked with both groups, and I know that we can work together to serve students better, and I anticipate each of these people can help us in that regard. So I think I know every single one of these folks from seeing them around campus so much, but Anwar Badun is here, I think I saw him. Go ahead, stand up. I'm sorry, Anwar, sit down.
No, 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 you can still wait.
No, he's got, he's got a different position.
Oh, he's, okay.
I appreciate that, Mr. Mead, for you. So let me start over. Samer Arthris, and we have Troy Gibson, I saw Troy back there, and Charles Jackson, I walked in behind Charles, where's Charles Jackson? Beth Michael, and Sherry Malai, and Bridget Smith-Botos, and Kiara Wilson. So those are the new members of the navigating corps, and I would invite you to welcome them here. Thank you all. And Anwar, now you stand up, Anwar. You are the student affairs, student affairs manager that was just moved by the board in the Student Conduct and Compliance Office. And colleagues, you may know Manera. Manera had the role before Anwar, and Anwar was previously in the recruitment office, and he was always one person in my short tenure that I liked being around, because he was excited about being on the job, but he was also willing to come to me and say, "Hey, here's some things I wondered if you thought about." And he was willing to give me candid feedback where we could grow, and where we could, where we could do better. So, and he's passionate about HFC, and poor guy had to stand up twice tonight. So please, join me in walking. Now, I want to make sure, I don't think these individuals are here, but in case that they are, I do want to mention their name. And even if they're not here, I still want to mention their name. Is Janelle Mills here? I don't think she is. She's a full-time faculty in reference librarian, and we have Richard Cislak. I don't think he's here, but full-time faculty, Mechanical School of Business Entrepreneurism Professional Development. And then in the administrators local, we have, we just talked about Anwar. And is Eric Wilson here? And he's new to us in the position of web content and design. So, Madam Chair, those are the individuals who you all just voted on, and I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to say congratulations to my teammates, because they are entitled to that kind of congratulations.
And welcome to your new titles. Okay, next item, please. Yeah.
Can I ask for clarification?
On something we already voted on?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. It says navigator and academic advising. Have we, these people then will be doing both advising and being navigators?
Well, Trustee Mead, they, the title that they have is Student Success Navigator. They will be in the academic advising department, and the job they will be doing is most akin to what was previously described as academic advisors.
So the part-time academic advisors no longer work?
No, we still have some part-time academic advisors, and some of the individuals I just named have moved now from academic advisors to full-time student success navigators. But, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Herbst, your department intends to continue with some part-time academic advisors.
No one's going to lose their job over this, because they've been part-time, and one three remains part-time. They're very, we count on them being there as part of the design I gave to President Kavaluna.
Is the intention to get all advisors to be full-time?
No.
Eventually?
That, well, that's not in the plan that I proposed to you all, and I don't have an intention to do that.
All right, so we'd have some part-time advisors and full-time advisors, but they're also navigators?
Right.
Okay, so some, the navigators would be with the divisions, or are they going to be in the Welcome Center?
The three navigators that were embedded in the different divisions will remain, and the other seven will be working on the academic advising office, doing both academic advising in early alert and outreach as part of retention programs.
Where will they be located?
Be located in the Welcome Center.
In the Welcome Center, okay, thank you.
Four of them are replacing themselves, and so they're going to stay at the same location.
Okay, all right, I just needed that clarification. I already voted for it.
I was going to say, yeah, I just wanted to advise you, now that you're asking questions, that it's a.
It's a bad time to do it.
It's, yeah, yeah, it's not really appropriate. Trustee Mosip?
No, I.
Not inappropriate.
Sure. I think this is a great step, especially toward building that relationship with students that they need to see somebody who's there full-time. So I'm glad that we're going that way. President Kavaluna, making sure that we have full-time advisors who are seeing the students all the time, and that they don't have to go from one advisor to another, where they, it's okay to see another advisor, but I think when they see somebody who is consistent and somebody who's always there, I think that plays for the benefit of the students. So I think this is a great step of, one of the major drawbacks was like, we always have only half-time or part-time advisors. Now that we do have full, dedicated, full-time advisors, I think that they will contribute to the student's success, and obviously to improve the student experience on campus. So that's, that's great to hear.
Okay, thank you. All right, next item. Number five, yes.
Number five, capital project funding, amended action move to approve the college issued private bonds for $15.2 million paid back over 13 years. The bonds could be paid back as savings from the I E M P are realized. This option should be considered because it would preserve college reserves while retiring the debt with the energy savings from the project. The option would be the issuance of a bond, would be the issuance of a bond issue, which would not involve a tax leaving.
We need a motion.
So moved.
We need support, okay. All right, Trustee Mosip, your question?
Yes, in our last meeting, and as the minutes reflect from that, that we talked about the three different options, and obviously we went with the, or the discussion was mostly around the private bond, but we also talked about perhaps that we could have a combination of using the reserves money and borrow as little as possible. So, but what I see here on the agenda item is just to go ahead and.
No, we're still using, that full amount is 23 million. We're only asking for 15 million in the bonds. We would still be using reserves for the difference.
Well, my expectation is that the state is giving about six, six million.
No, that's for the tech building, that's not for this.
Is this only for the Integrated Energy Master Project?
Yes, yes.
So, but I thought our discussion also was using some of the reserves for this, wasn't there a discussion?
We are, it's a $23 million project.
Were actually taken from the reserves, then?
Right, for the difference between the 15 million of this and the 23 million, that's the total project cost.
Okay.
And that's what we did discuss at last month's meeting.
So, but the decision to take money from the reserves, has that decision been made, or we still have to make that decision?
That, no, that is how it would be.
But it's not.
The project begun.
It's not being stated here, then?
No, because we're only talking, we're only giving authority for the bond issuance at this point, when we're ready to start the project. At this point, all we're doing is giving authority to the president. It doesn't mean he's going to act upon it until we're ready, we've signed a contract and we're ready to move the project forward. At this point, we're just having him prepared to move forward with selling bonds in order to fund the project. And it's not the full funding, the rest would come out of our reserves.
I understand what you're saying, but just under, I mean, this is for both projects?
Where does it say for both projects? It doesn't.
The, may I add?
Oh, renovation for the, all right, yeah, and how it's worded in the beginning.
Just to run the record, so I'll make sure we're clear on this.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Okay, President Kavaluna?
So, the document that I circulated at the last meeting was a memorandum outlining three different options for this, this question of how we will fund the two projects. And it seemed quite apparent to me that there was no interest in an increase of property taxes to the city, the residents of Dearborn. It also seemed to me that there was less interest in funding these projects fully by reserves, and that the option that was favored, and I'm not suggesting that this is the way it has to be, I'm just saying what I recall is the discussion that the board had, was to issue bonds by the college that the college itself would pay the debt service for. And I do recall that there was discussion about whether this amount that the administration is seeking was appropriate, because there was question about whether we should use more of our reserve. And what I responded to then, and what I would invite trustees to look at, is the spreadsheet that was attached to Mr. Satkowski's memorandum that I circulated, and it outlines the significant amount of reserves that we have already used, and that we intend to continue to use to pay for the two projects. When you bake in the cost of both projects and what we already plan to use reserves for, the remainder that we are asking the authority to have to, to go to the bond market to use is the 15.2. Chair Patelishkov, you're right that this is not, it is a potential that we wouldn't use that much of the bond market, but the spreadsheet that's on the back of this memorandum maps out where the funds would go, I'm sorry, where the funds would come from, to which part of both projects they would fund.
Wouldn't go to, right.
For each year, out until the I E M P starts paying for itself all the way.
Paying back, yeah.
So I think we, there may be some misunderstanding in the nomenclature. There already is a significant amount of our savings or.
Reserves.
Our reserves that we are devoting to both of these projects. We, we will continue to do that, but using any more of the reserves is against both Mr. Satkowski's recommendation, my recommendation, and frankly, best practices in financial auditing, because it would take our reserves to a place below where we would feel comfortable. So I do feel comfortable and confident that, one, we are using reserves for both of these projects, two, we're not using too many reserves, and when you balance that, the correct, the correct request of this board is to authorize this college to issue bonds to the maximum of $15.2 million. I don't know if that speaks to the board's questions, but that is the proposal.
Yes, Trustee Elaine.
Yeah, that's what I understood, and I was in agreement, and we didn't, I don't recall from our minutes that we put a number on, although I think it was the consensus that everyone wanted to pull out a significant but not irresponsible portion of our reserves. We all know the reasons for that. I would like to know for Mr. Satkowski, if we can pay back, if we find ourselves with an embarrassment of riches, can we pay off the bonds early without any penalty?
We will certainly explore that as part of the issues.
Okay, all right.
Sometimes when you do that.
Sometimes with mortgages, you can pay.
You get, you get some kind of penalty, yeah.
Sometimes you get, so, yeah. But to get that option, but yes.
Right, so, I mean, it's, I guess, I guess what I'm saying is, I think it's my opinion that we should try to pay them as we're able to responsibly. We don't want to endet ourselves or overly. And then, are we expected at the end of this year to run a surplus?
Yes.
Yes. Can, and when is our first payment due? I don't remember what that is, I was trying to look quickly, but that font is so small there that I can't trust my eyes.
We wouldn't.
On the, the, the multicom.
First payment, it wouldn't be structured.
Until, like, two years out, a year, two years, a year and a half?
It's structured, it needs till two, late 2020, is what we're looking at. Because the first year of this, we can definitely use the reserves.
Use the reserves, yeah.
As a land fund to cover this, and also, till we get a department for the second year.
Okay, yeah. Well, I would just like to express that when, if we do run a surplus, we commit to paying off promptly. Just my own personal preference.
I think that's a fantastic point, Trustee Elaine, and I just wanted to add some context to that, because while Mr. Satkowski is giving the level best truth about the potential for surplus, remember, this budget that we are under is a budget that anticipates the cost to fund the college that is significantly below what we would be obligated under our contract requires, under our contract requirement to the full-time faculty. We budgeted for somewhere in the realm of 177 full-time faculty members, and that is the budget for which Mr. Satkowski suggests, and correctly suggests, that we will have a surplus. By the fall of 2020, we are under an obligation to have 200 full-time faculty, and I think Mr. Satkowski would agree with me that if we met that obligation, we would be far from a surplus. In fact, it would be significantly different. So I just want to say that our contractual obligations to 1650 dramatically change what our reserves look like. And I've been candid with you that, and when I asked this board to raise tuition, I've been candid to you then, that the leadership from the full-time faculty union and I are in negotiations on that issue. But as it stands now, the view of our reserves is under a view that is without meeting the obligation to the full-time faculty. So if, I'm not calling it fool's gold, I'm just saying that that is, that is a moving part for which Mr. Satkowski and I have been specifically conservative about in maintaining a reserve because of that ongoing negotiation, that, that the full-time faculty negotiated in good faith and have a right to ask that it be delivered or negotiated. So I don't view the reserve as much of a cushion as some may.
And quite frankly, we all know that there can always be unanticipated consequences down the road that we can't foresee right now, and we have to be prepared and responsible in girding ourselves for those kinds of potential issues that would dip into the reserves for other reasons. And so we need to maintain a viable number for future use where come, because I don't think any of us want to go to the community anymore and ask, and ask for help that way, if we can avoid it. All right, yes. All right, yes, trustee Barrett?
I completely understand where trustee Mosip's going with this, but I do agree with you that we don't want to go any lower.
Too deep, yes.
Too deep into the reserves, knowing that, I mean, for any other reason. We want to keep a certain percentage of our budget in a safe place. That's what I want to emphasize, what I heard you say earlier, yeah.
Yes, it's just prudent.
Thank you.
Well, I'm just saying that we have many things, many balls that are up in the air that we're all juggling.
Thank you very much.
And I'm just saying, public indebtedness is one issue, and a huge issue that we all know is out there is affordability of higher education and, and our desire to maintain that for the future it is affordable for middle-class people. There are lots of proposals to make it free or, or for scholarships, and scholarships are great, but a lot of times the upper end and the lower end are assisted, and we, a lot of people feel that there's a broad middle that, that isn't, that is, that struggles. So, yeah, I, I don't know what the future holds, and it's, even if it's all great things. I mean, purportedly, the economy is doing wonderfully right now, it's just that it's not being shared by everyone. So that, that, all being said, I'm just, I'm just expressing, and I don't have any clue, but I'm just saying that I know that public finances are, are an issue, so.
And this is all a balancing act of, of needs versus wants, and quite frankly, we, we're looking for a long-term future vision, and the I E M P is one that is going to be realized over a, a long-term time span, and not something that is going to happen in, in a five-year even realization. And so we have to, we have to be cautious in how we determine how we fund some of these investments, which is what most of this really is, that we're talking about the technology building, and the I E M P is an investment in our property, so.
Which I think I personally feel very strongly, it's a great investment, and I don't want to imply otherwise.
Yes.
I think it's something we need to do. It's not just energy, it's water, it's facilities and investment. We have to look at these as investments in our, in our institutions, and they're well worth it, so I don't need to imply otherwise.
Just a follow-up on trustee Elaine's, yeah, it's a great investment, it's an exciting project moving forward, I'm excited about it. But trustee Elaine, we all know that when economies go in the right direction, what happens in rural, the community college, so we need to keep an eye on that. I know we won't, we will not be going out to our, to our investors, our voters to ask for more money. I don't want to see, like you, I don't want to see a student pay more money into that.
Absolutely. All right, do we need a roll call vote on this?
I, I just want to say something on the record as a follow-up. I'm, I'm not here saying that we do not need this project. I'm a huge believer of, obviously, real.